On the March tenth, seven P M, Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order. All good selectmen present. The administrative president, Leo, will be recording this meeting for the benefit of the town people and the general public. Lyndon Nickerson will upload it to the town website and to YouTube. Okay, mister, I've got some old business here on the meeting minutes from last week.
Motion to accept the minutes for the March third, two thousand twenty-two meeting as written.
A second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Good.
Well, as always. Yeah, looking to me as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna open this up for public comment to start with. If you were on the agenda, I should await to be a time on the agenda, but anything else from the public, I'll start from the left.
Uh, Lee Markell, I wanted to congratulate Justin. He's uh, he's going to be the next selectman and replacing Bob. Also, I'd like to say that we're really fortunate to get John Troyer to replace Fred because it looks like Chris has some big issues to fill. And it looks like John's up for the task and uh, and also I'd like to say um, that the selectmen did a real great job explaining all the warrant articles as fast, wait, or meeting because there was hardly any uh, problems, there were not very many discussions necessary, and we know well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you have any okay?
No, I'm good.
Going down through the room, you guys were okay for now, alright. Alright, bringing back to town business, the first thing on the agenda, we have Hope um, here to discuss the proper chance of communication with the board. Hope, could you come up and uh, hold that Hope anchor?
R C.
R C. I always wanna say you can write, look at that.
Yeah. Um, can, do I do it from here?
I'd like to give, you could mess there, sure.
I can, okay. Um, well, first of all, I wanna thank you for letting me come tonight and talk to you about this um, and I tried to keep my statements brief so that um, I didn't spend too much time, I haven't written out so that I stay on track, but if there-
And can you give a copy of that to Lee after, so she can go write that down?
Um, but if you have any questions, just let me know, and I'll be happy to flesh out any topics that I touch on if you need me to.
And I do have a few topics that you and I have discussed that I will have in the agenda later on as well.
Okay, cool.
Alright.
Alright. Um, so, I had a conversation with one of the selectmen on election night after the meeting in which many things were discussed, suggestions made, and promises given. I'm coming this evening to follow up on that conversation and make portions of that conversation public. My desire in doing this is to have it on the record, and I hope it will help the select board understand the expectations going forward, holding all of us accountable. Um, the greatest thing that has been a concern to me in the last month, as I brought things up, for example, needs for this building and the proper tools to do my job, I was repeatedly told that it was new information, and that I must go through the proper channels for getting these things addressed. So I'm here tonight to let all of you, new and old, selectmen, and the public know that I did go through the proper channels. This information is not new, therefore it should not be news to you. This information was um, ignored or disregarded purposely or not by the board. However, that's in the past, and with a humbly, a humble apology on your part and new understanding, I know that we can move forward in a positive and in a healthy way. When I began work here in August of twenty eighteen, the selectmen work day, Mike and Bob, um, that first fall and winter season, I would come into work in the morning and find mice droppings on my desk. This problem was brought to the attention of my supervisor and then brought to the joint loss committee, hoping for some action to be taken. I don't know what action, if any, was taken, but I was told that because it's an old building, I should expect to share my space with rodents. Just because this is the reality does not mean that it's good and healthy. Again and again, we have had issues with rodents in this building. Some of the stories are pretty wild, if you ever wanna hear them, just ask. Sometime later, there was a milk snake coiled in the cupboard of our office. It came up through the hole in the floor of the cupboard. Mike Cummings kindly um, removed the snake and covered the hole. So my conversation on Tuesday evening regarding that issue came with a promise that the rodent issue would be taken care of by pest control. I'm thankful for that action, if it has been taken or will be, which I'm assuming it will be talked about tonight. Um, the other issues with our building, um, asbestos, roof inciting, deck, walkways, spongy floors, not enough storage for town records, privacy issues, allergens in the cupboards that make us itch, that kinda thing, have been brought to the attention of the joint loss committee a time and again, um, with little no or very delayed responses and action taken. My understanding is that the joint loss committee is our channel, to let the selectmen and the town know of health and safety problems in our workplace. Somewhere in this process, the communication has broken down. I'm not here to pick apart, to find out where that communication broke down, that doesn't matter to me. I'm here to make the breakdown known and to let the expect, that, let you know that the expectation on my part is that this breakta- breakdown will now be repaired. Going forward, I expect the select rep for joint loss, whoever that is, will bring health and safety problems for each of our buildings and departments to the select board, and the maintenance budget line will be used to solve all these problems. I've been told we have plenty of money for these problems, therefore I expect that these problems will be resolved to the satisfaction of our town employees in a timely manner. Please don't dismiss these problems as they have been dismissed in the past. Another issue that I brought through proper channels is the need for the clerk's office to have improved software. I made a request to the town administrator and one of the selectmen before budget season of our need and was to- told that it was too expensive. So you can imagine my shock when I found out during budget season where all that extra money was going. Yet, I was told we didn't have enough money for our town office to have the tools we need to do our job efficiently and effectively. What is done is done, whether we agree with it or not. The reality remains that we cannot serve our rural residents' wealth when we are using inadequate tool that has quirks to numerous account that we just have to work around. Other employees in this building often see how long some of our customers stand at our window waiting while our software does not work properly. Within the last week, our new selectman waited for me to process something that should have taken fifteen minutes max, but it took at least forty-five minutes and I wasn't even finished.
This new one?
This new one, right here. I took his number and called him when it was finally finished, but this is not acceptable.
I went to Jacob, I'm sorry, I missed it.
It took over an hour to resolve.
Okay.
In the end.
Was this regarding vehicles?
Yes.
State?
Um, it's the state and town portion, it's just, it's our D M V, it's our module that we have for software. Um, with the amount of taxes that our residents pay and the fact that our office brings in the most red revenue, second only to the tax office, this should be a top priority to remedy rather than be ignored or delayed. I know that there's more that could and should be addressed, but I think this is enough for one night. Um, I trust-
We're here every Thursday.
I know, I trust that you're now aware that I have gone through the proper channels, I did. Um, and that you will do your part by giving a humble apology to our employees in this building for ignoring our needs, and that you will look forward to remedy this negligence. It was not my desire for the public to be made aware, our public to be made aware of the negligence on the part of this select board, but I strongly believe that it must be public record to keep us all accountable. That's it, but if you have questions, let me know.
I disagree with Bob, many things you said there, I'm not gonna debate him tonight.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna say for chain of command, um, one thing for software, so a person should be advocating as a town clerk, you're an employee of the town clerk. The town, town clerk should be advocating for a system of improvements to the town. We can only act upon her improvements. We don't go to the, the part-time employee, which you are, and ask for improvements, we work through the town clerk, we gotta do that.
I know that she also requested it.
Well, the thing is, uh, we had a discussion, but yeah, there was discussion back and forth. If she didn't get back to why we made a decision, whether or not, that's to be decided, that should get back to you through her again. Well, it should be going through the town clerk. Some of the other things, um, mice droppings in the building, again, this is an old building, you will have mice droppings, especially when people leave, food stops are around over the weekend. I'm sorry, that's the way it is, or in the evening, it happens. I do believe that needs, we need to do something. I suggested something the other day, and I got squashed. I said, let's just get some of that sticky paper, it works wonderful. My son just did it in his basement, he said he, he got rid of like four mice in a matter of two days. And things, oh, that's inhumane, you're calling rodents and bad things, carry disease, but, but no one wants to put a little mouse paper out and collect it. You know, we can pay big dollars to get a, a, a exterminator here, and we probably will, and the things probably will. But there are some things you can do to make your life a little bit easier here. There are some things I do agree with you with. Uh, for exen- for example, when this board was alerted about asbestos in behind the town clerks and the pipes, that was the first I heard of it. And we acted upon that virtually, within, within, within a month, we had it mitigated.
I had been told, that was right as I started.
Okay.
So I wasn't in with part of the asbestos thing, and I did see that it was taken care of, um, but I had been told-
It was brought up with prior boards that didn't do anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. But the thing is, the liquid asbestos is, is a sin. And the thing, especially when it's flaking off, that's a sin, and it should never have been allowed, and if it's anymore ever recovered, that's an immediate fix. It's gonna be done quickly, but it, it is an unhealthy situation.
Right.
Totally agree with you there.
Yeah.
And there's few, and so are all the things I agree with you there. But the thing is, you should need, you need to go through, yes, the committee is one thing, yet if there's an issue with your work, workplace, you gotta let the town clerk know so she can communicate it to us. She comes and talks to us on a regular basis, and she's gonna communicate through that. The person overall responsible for this building is the town administrator, and she does pass stuff on to us, and she's gonna continue to pass stuff on to us. And as we find a problem, you know, I'm committed to make this a safe, it may not be the best building, but it's gonna be a safe building to work in. It really has to be a safe building, and I'm committed to your safety as well as your, all your fellow employees.
So joint loss is not what-
No, that is, excuse me, I'll go into that for this year, this past year.
Okay.
Whenever we had something a joint loss, and I think they'll remember, I brought it before the selectmen.
Then how is it, this is my question then, then how is it that if it was brought before the selectmen, that at town meeting, Dave said that he had never heard that we had mice in this building?
Never heard we had mice in this building, ever. So, mice in the building might not be something that's considered a large item to bring to the board. Where you think the mice in the building is a big item, when you look at joint loss, they're looking at threshold, doorways, locks that don't work. They're looking at a lot of building items that might even be the roof that brings, so joint loss brings a lot of different things that we fixed and repaired over there, but I don't remember mice being one of them.
Can I speak on that? We did address the mice at one point last year. We got our handyman individual, look at options for more natural remedies, and we worked with a, a packet that was supposed to-
And one of our meetings, Lee?
Yeah, well, you guys asked me to communicate, get our handyman, and he had to address it. And whether it was the time of the year, and the mice just went outdoors after the fact, the mice problem seemed to go away. And I know it's probably the time of the year, but the mice are back and they're eating them.
And they can be problematic, and the thing is, and a lot of people say use decon, the problem with decon, thing is, it makes your, your work environment even worse. Because the mice will eat it, then go into the walls and die, and then you stunt-
We have done the decon in years past and had exactly that.
Smells, and the thing is, you got a rotting mouse in the wall, and it's not, not, that's, I think that's even worse. So there are other things we can do should, to mitigate that.
You can send Greg downstairs in the dark so that he can look for light coming through the basement to fill with insulation. So there were measures that were taken, but you don't need a very big hole for the mouse to-
So anyway, if we did discuss it, I don't remember it, I don't remember, not any part of it, so, I'd like to see the meeting minutes from that. I don't remember, but the mouse issue may not be something that stands out in my head either. Because we're dealing with all kinds of issues. But that being said, to try and get this one off the board, I had on my schedule already tonight to speak, and asked Lee to get an estimate, because it's not very much money, we're talking, I think people would do an entire home start around two twenty-five on the initial, and then it's like a hundred and fifty dollars a couple times a year for a follow-up, so.
For what?
Um, I wanna have you call J P Pest Services for a proposal.
Okay.
On the mice and rodents, and I also have another card here from Arbor Pest Management, which is a guy that does a lot of local work around here as well. Ken, I have to agree with you. It does really, it's awful when you come in and you see your work area and you got mouse dropping in your work area. That is not great.
It's not, it's, it is a health issue.
Yes, Ken, we're totally-
To have that in, in our space.
Yeah. So we'll do that, we'll go ahead and get, uh, as I told you, we'll get somebody in hand to treat that, because uh, regardless if somebody doesn't wanna do it humanely, whatever, these are professional companies, and we'll get that taken care of.
So, let me follow up with that. Is joint loss the place for us to express our needs?
I think it is a good starting place, but we are here, as I told you, every Thursday. If anytime you feel like you've gone through, and you've asked somebody to try and do something, if it doesn't work, come and sit here in front of us.
Can I just make a recommendation? I get pretty busy in my, with all my positions that I carry at the town. We tend to get a ton of emails from Woody when he has a broken piece of wood. So it works, I print every email that he has a request for the selectmen to consider, and I, it goes into the mailbox, it gets put on the agenda, and they discuss it.
I guess that is a good idea.
And that might be an avenue where you, I, I don't have, I will get the email in my inbox, but the whole point is that if you reply to the selectmen as a group email, I will get that email.
Semitary.
And then, no, what, that's shared email.
You and-
The shared email, it's me, and then I will print it, put it in the box, and make sure it gets on the agenda to discuss. And Dawn has done it many months when updates from, um, building department, um, I don't know, from, uh, it, it seems to work for one department. Maybe that's where we need to extend it into the other.
I like to say that, I, I like to think the board is fully committed to the health of employees. I mean, anything less than that isn't, should be not tolerated, we should be walking out, be, be ashamed if we're not committed to your health.
Well, that's, that's what I thought too.
And uh-
It is a shame.
And, and the thing is, I don't think this board has any, done anything wrong, and I don't think we need to apologize for anything, but we need to improve the communications so we can act upon things.
Well, maybe that's where the apology needs to be.
Again, no apology needed, we just need to improve upon what we need to do.
You don't need to apologize for not?
No, because if I'm ignorant of something, how can I act upon it?
How are you ignorant if we're going through the channels?
The thing is, I don't see Linda coming here talking about software except one time at the budget season, and she just really had a glancing, uh, discussion on that. She wasn't talking for any length of time on that. Uh, mice, the milk snake, I, I, I did, I, I maybe heard about the milk snake one time, and I never really heard about that, to any great degree. Mice, the thing is, I've been working in this building for maybe six years now, mouse droppings have been historically here all the time. Thing is, it, it's, I think it's me-
They are, but that doesn't make it healthy or right.
I know, but the thing is, obviously, in the past, something was done, maybe we need more. And I don't wanna get pushed back from employees saying, when I even make a suggestion, oh, I don't wanna touch the mouse. We have gloves on, for God's sake, we use gloves for COVID, we can use gloves to pick up a dead mouse that's over the weekend on sticky paper and throw it in the trash. We can do that. Uh, it's not rocket science. And the thing is, uh, so I'm, I, I'm committed, I am fully committed, I wanna share with you, I'm fully committed in my, a hundred percent to making sure this place is healthy. But as Lee just pointed out, one thing, communication is key to making it happen, and we have to communicate better.
So you're saying that I can't come to you, I have to go through Linda?
No, but I think you should for like software problems, that's a department, that, for example, not all issues, but if there's a, if she's not, she should go through Linda. If she's not addressing it, then you should use us as a de facto, uh, standby method. You should fall, at least let Linda know that you have a problem, she, she's one who's hired you, she's the one who knows what's going on.
She knows that there's a problem.
Well, how come she's not here advocating for you? Obviously, you must have a poor supervisor at that, if that's the case. No, but the thing is, I just wanna clear that, the thing is, I wanna make sure that you have a path to follow. Okay, you get, you don't get the, um, the satisfaction that you're getting to your supervisor, and you have every right, Dr. Lee, to talk to the board, as Dave said. Every right to.
I, I think using the email approach, because some things could happen interim between the last time you complained and another time, where there's something, something could break or whatever, use it. I know Woody uses it all the time.
Yeah.
And when he does bring it to our attention, we have a chance to respond. So it may be that it, there's an email there, uh, well, the selectmen will be able to work on it, excuse me.
And the other thing, they'll give us a, um, a point time where I wouldn't have forgot about the mouse, because it would have been in an email. Um, not to say I wouldn't have forgot about the mouse, anyway, I'm fifty-six and I do forget about some things. But as we were talking, I think the snake might have been three years ago, four years ago, it's been a while back.
The snake?
Yeah.
It was in twenty twenty. It's only been a couple of years.
It was in twenty twenty.
Well, a couple of years.
I've got a whole list of all the stuff in our joint loss meeting, so it's-
So the snake, when, when we were talking about it, Hope, Hope reminded me that Mike had gone down there and sealed the hole, and I said, I do remember the snake, because Mike did seal the hole. Because I said, I don't know if it came in from a door or whatever, but there was a hole found, and Mike did seal the hole, so I remember that portion of the conversation, and I told her that. But let's try and keep this, um, portion of the, um, meeting going. A couple of other things that were brought up, and um, I have quotes here from June twenty-ninth from two contractors. Uh, we got bids back then to redo and repair this roof, uh, strip it and replace the roofing. They come in higher than the ten thousand dollar threshold, and higher than we had liked, so we talked about putting an R F I out. We had other R F Is going out for different buildings, to get different pricing done on them, and this one here didn't get done. Not through any fault of the selectmen, just that we didn't act on this, and now it looks like we have more shingles blowing off the roof. And during these discussions that come up just over these last couple of weeks, somebody told me there was water in the safe. And then I told people, that's the first time I heard that, that is the first time I heard that. So, um, that being said, I asked Lee to get these two out just when I came in late this afternoon, just before this meeting. I made another phone call to a roofing company that I think will give us a more reasonable price, but these will actually be sealed bids with an R F P, and we're gonna have them put that, uh, request for pricing out to them next week. We'll probably give them a couple of weeks to get their bids in, and so that will be active on this grid. You know, I, look, look back, the thing is, what really took me by surprise and, and a little bit of disappointment of some of the employees, and not, not you per se, not any, anyone else a- on, on the worker level, but I look at the supervisors, and I look at one supervisor, I mean, we had the fire chief come in about two weeks ago, and started complaining to us about the sign falling off the fire station. I'm saying to myself, well, you're just making us aware of it now, we just had a budget season, did it even include it as a repair item in the budget season? You know, oh, he, and then he had, we gotta change the garage doors. And I'm, I'm, I'm scratching my head, I'm saying, we just went through a budget process, we, we could only put so much money aside. And he's asking me for major repairs to his fire station after the budget process, we just had a public hearing, and he's bringing this stuff up. Still like, late in the game, but the thing is, again, the only things I wanna really emphasize at this point are the, um, the safety issues. But this, these nameless issues that come in after the fact, these supervisors who don't bring it to our attention, makes me wanna scream sometimes. It really makes me wanna scream, and I get disappointed. The software issue, makes me wanna scream, if it was that important.
Excuse me, we brought that to the attention of the administrator and one of the selectmen in October, before budget season.
But, the thing is, it wasn't really, uh, deliberate as a critical need.
You know why?
No, I don't.
Because I was told, I just want, I, I need the numbers, I just want the numbers.
Who's that?
We got the numbers.
Okay.
And I was told it was too expensive.
Did the board get to see the numbers?
Yep, we do, I'll bring them up again.
But the thing is, sometimes we won't turn, we, we, sometimes we won't turn down proposals or turn-
But I can't do my job well if I don't have the right tools.
Well, the thing is, we'd have to look at that a little bit more, I need to see that, why, why didn't the, your, your, why didn't the town clerk come to us, put her fist on the table and say, why can't I get the software, we can't do the job?
Well, Mike, wait, wait a second, let's go back just a little bit, yeah, let me try and answer some of it, because I had the same question as you did.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so let me just try and go through it. Um, B M S I is the software we're using correct now, right? For your department and their department.
Yep, and the tax department and the building department.
I have a slight correction to that, that's really, it's a weird thing.
Okay.
B M S I services my software.
Oh, yeah.
My software, though, is designed by Interware.
Okay.
But it's serviced by B M S I.
And Linda did bring to us that Avatar, I think Avatar, am I saying it right?
Yes, Avatar, she said she's brought that to you for like three or four years.
About three or four years, and I do remember last fall coming to us.
Yeah.
Now, last fall, she came to us and said that we're having trouble with the B M, B M S I software, and can I go to Avatar? And at the time, I didn't believe that the two were compatible. And my big concern then was we had spent a substantial amount of money upgrading B M S I. It was about, was it about a twenty thousand dollar line item in your budget, because we upgraded it?
No, uh, no, that was for computers, the twenty thousand was for-
We had computers, and we also had an update line item in there for B M S I.
That's all support, every year there is caused associated-
Was it increased one year, because it was gonna, um, their support was gonna end?
No, that was, uh, Microsoft Office, and that may have been a slight increase there, but it was also because we had more users, so there was additional licensing that needed to be added.
And at the time, didn't you look into Avatar and say it was not friendly for what you did?
They don't have her module.
They don't have-
Well, they do, but it's-
They don't have accounting.
Yeah, they do.
Not Avatar.
Uh, no, they have payroll, and so the, the, the issue was, we have, we spent a lot of money on the B M S I, how do we in, into-
Interface.
Interface a different company that can merge and talk to our software, because we don't wanna go backwards. You might make your job easier, but will it make my office more difficult? So there is a module that you might-
I have spoken with Avatar.
Yeah.
And in the fall, I did, I did a lot of research in the, in the fall. Um, and watched one of the other clerks in action on Avatar. Um, but the Avatar does not, I was told by Avatar, they do not have the accounting software. And because they don't have the accounting software, they understand that their clerk work, the, their clerk module has to be able to talk to other companies' accounting software, and so they make that work. Okay? It talks to, like, it would talk to B M S I.
Okay, um, when we get the numbers, you said you had the numbers?
Yeah, um-
If you don't have them tonight, that's fine, but I would like to see the numbers, because if they were shown, I'll have them in my book.
I have a lot of notes on this.
Yeah, that's okay.
Um, you know, questions, I have things that, but the last page is the quote for my module.
For just the town clerk.
For my module.
Vehicle registration.
Now, when you say my module, you mean yours and Linda's?
Club work, yep.
Yeah.
Vehicle registration.
I didn't know, we wanted to keep the-
No, our office, if our office switches, it's both of us that switch.
Uh, Dave, before we go in and make any decisions-
I'm not making any decisions, I'm just looking, looking at-
The fact that I don't have the town clerk here, I'm not gonna do any action, or even entertaining the act, no, I'm just wanting to take- Without the town clerk's input. So we have, um, software supports thirty-two hundred, it looks like, and then we've got-
That's the annual, I think, yeah.
Clerk service module, and dog licensing module was eleven-nine.
Mm-hmm.
And optional boat, M A A P module was five hundred, that's so we could register boats in town.
Which we don't-
I'll move to that one.
We don't do bo- we don't do boats yet.
Oh, I know.
Right. That would be the additional fee if you want the boat model.
Okay. So, uh, when I talked with you, um, I knew that we had done some upgrades and paid for some, and so I had never seen this, because I know we had talked about it at that meeting, but they didn't have those numbers when we did talk, or at least nobody brought it to us, um.
Well, somehow I was told that we didn't have enough money.
Do you think these numbers are, well, they're obviously not current, they're a year or so old, right?
That last page-
Yeah.
-is from this month.
Oh, from this month, okay.
Yep. The la- just the last page.
Twelve thirty-one twenty-two, computers, whatever. The purchase of my personal tire clerk system.
And that's valid for three months. That price is valid for three months.
Okay, um, what we're gonna do- Um, what we're gonna do is we can get a copy of this to Lynn.
I can, I can email it to you.
I have, I have.
Oh, you do?
You, you, if it hasn't changed from the one you sent me earlier.
Did I email it to you?
Yeah, we did. Um, it just, what I got from Avatar was for all the modules and they all range in the fourteen thousand dollar range. So combined, when they're asking for level services, um, I guess bringing it up to the board. I mean, I could've asked if I understood that it was critical for you to do any work in your department, to increase my budget line for that. I do have a small amount in reserve for, um, the warrant article that's got about forty-four hundred dollars in there.
Yeah. What is your, um, but what I'll ask you to do, Lynn, don't do it now, cause we don't know the numbers off the top of our head, but let's look through your budget and the budgeted numbers to work on the software or upgrades or any of that stuff for computers. And let's look at those line items. But, um, Mike made a good point out, I don't wanna bypass anything with the town clerk herself.
I see.
So Lynn has this copy, let's look at the budget line items. And then, um, let's have the town clerk come in with you as well. But what I'd like to do is a lot of times we get these companies that promise this or that. I would like to have, if you guys are, um, I think Linda had gone to several clerks' meetings and she said, when she came out from those clerk meetings last fall, that the people using Avatar said it was way easier, way simpler, and that's just information we got last year in the fall. But you've gotta understand, our, and we're gonna make sure it all works with her plans to make sure that at the end of the year, we can transfer that information over for our accounts as well.
I personally would like to have somebody from Avatar come and do a demonstration.
To the selectmen's meeting as well.
I mean, you guys can, they can come here too, but I want to see it personally.
Well, you know what you could do, is you could have them come, go through Linda, have them do a demonstration for you guys. If you guys are happy with, then come to us and we'll also have Avatar come and sell it to us.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if we have the money in our budget this year to do it, but we will look at that, and if we don't, we'll tell you an old budget for it, if it's some, gonna be some tool to make it simpler.
Sometimes they can accommodate that as well with a two-year contract. So let's say, for example, I find eight thousand dollars that I can work with.
Mm-hmm.
And you say, hey, I, I'm working the software, but I can't pay for it all, they'll split that total cost, which is sixteen thousand, with the two-year payment, so that allows you to do the second half. I've seen that happen before.
Yes, other town clerks.
I mean, we've had, we've had the situation where the server died, you can't, if you have a budget and you don't have any reserve, then a five thousand dollar server just comes out of nowhere, so.
And when, and when Linda came in, Mike is right, uh, she had come in and said, you know, it would be better or faster or easier on Avatar, but it wasn't, uh, I can't do my job type of notification.
She never, never even gave us an indication of that, that your job was not being done.
Well, no, she was doing her job, it was just taking longer.
It's getting done, it just, I mean.
She, she never really, that, that point was never portrayed to us, okay?
Okay.
And that was the issue. And the thing is, I, I really think that, um, I, I commend you, I really do, for coming in and bringing it to our attention, but you can't cut out the town clerk, she's the elected official responsible for that agency.
The reason that I am here tonight.
Okay.
Is because I had a conversation with a selectman on Tuesday night, and I felt like what was stated during that time needed to be made public.
Okay.
I was the one that had the conversation, not Linda.
Okay, and, and again, one selectman is impotent from doing any work, it's gotta be a group of three.
Right.
And so he can promise you the world.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, that, exactly. The thing is, a one selectman can never promise to do anything.
My, my promise was that I would bring it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
My promise wasn't to act, I mean, but to bring it to the board.
Right. I understand that.
But again, I, I just feel we're missing a key component here, town clerk. Okay. And, but I, again, oh, if this is gonna, we never got communicated the fact that the job was being a snail space. And you brought up some good examples tonight.
It's very, very challenging.
I feel like it's gotten, it's gotten worse over time, because I don't feel like this was an issue in the past.
It has gotten worse, I would say, in the last year, year and a half.
The only time that I, maybe it's, it's something that the state has done an update, it's not compatible with this software, because in the past, it might be the internet is down or the state is down, and then there's no communication.
Right, and that's, that's understandable.
Yeah.
But no, this is software issues, and every, almost every time I call my tech support, they're like, what's a little glitch?
One other thing is, um, you know, I know we're gonna do this step with Avatar, the other thing we might wanna do is get BMSI in here and explain these issues, say, you know, we're thinking about maybe changing this portion because we're having this much trouble.
So BMSI doesn't have control over it? Because Interware's the one that created it?
Oh, I see.
They're the ones that make, create the updates and all of that?
So.
They just service it.
And we're, you're saying something, might expire and not be supported shortly as well?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Was it BMSI or Interware that wasn't gonna be supported shortly?
BMSI, Eric told me that he was having problems with his, um.
BMSI.
Whatever module he uses for BMSI.
Okay.
I don't know enough about that to speak on it.
Lynn, have you heard about it?
They're just, they're, they're glitches and it's very, but it's a finity software, you can work for three to six months, perfect, and then all of a sudden you realize something's not working. The server that's backed up on, uh, the information's backed up on the server, uh, creates a disconnect with the, this workstation, and then you get support and they all say, oh, you need an update. And it's like, well, why didn't I get an automatic update for this? Because we shouldn't be asking for an update on a crash, it should be always maintained on a regular basis, but.
So to make a long story short, if we can get the proper recommendations from the proper companies, get them in front of us, see the price proposals, look at our budgets, see whether it's something that we can do this year or next year.
I don't know, but if, if we can come up with the numbers, they go through a tutorial or a display, I don't think we need to repeat it for the selectmen.
Oh, I agree.
This is our job. We're here to manage the, the town monies. So if we say, we found some money, this is what we're proposing, they're willing to come, give us a two-year contract, I think that's the root, I mean, I don't wanna drag this out any longer than we have to, and it really isn't.
I don't want to, but sometimes there's a question we might find that hadn't been thought of. And so I don't wanna miss that opportunity as well.
When we make an appointment to make this happen, would you personally like to come and see it?
I could, yeah.
That might work, too.
I, I really look at you as the subject editor expert, I would take your opinion.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I would take your opinion as far as, uh, the God's truth, you know, saying the truth of it, rather than, uh, me trying to second guess what, how to do your job too. So I would, I'll credit you to your opinion.
Okay.
I really do.
I agree with that.
So, um, that being said, I think, um, all the issues are, did that miss one?
Those were the two things that I.
The two or four you already had.
Discussed tonight.
Cause we.
Which were.
Going through.
Control and, and software.
Yeah, going, well, going through joint loss and.
The thing is, joint loss is only one way, there should be multiple ways of bringing things out in case.
And I found out another way I can do it tonight.
Right.
Is that right?
Yep, yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And always, you know, this, we have public comment at the beginning and at the end of this meeting, and, you know, since I've been part of this board, Bob has made sure we do it twice, the other select boards just did it once and sometimes not at all. And sometimes you tried opening up to speak and they said you weren't allowed.
But in order for it to be part of the record and put on the agenda, we really ask the departments, get put on the agenda.
Sure.
So that it's a record-keeping as well and not, or taking.
But you can also walk in and it's still gonna be on the record.
Right. We'll give you one example, there's a gentleman here from the cemetery, uh, committee, okay? And, uh, he loved, well, he would always bring up, uh, issues for the cemetery, he'd be one of our regulars, he'd always bring up issues. And we started yelling at him, says, Dawn, talk to Lynn, get it on the agenda, and we'll make sure we have a dedicated time. Don't, don't, don't ambush us in public comment, because your, your, your department head, you might say, busy, committee head, says, put it on the agenda and we can address it then. And, uh, so that, that's the beauty, when it's on the agenda like it is tonight, we know, we, your dedicated time.
Okay.
I would like to, I would like to speak to one other item that came up to me, um, several times yesterday without me looking for it. Um, there's been discussions in our town offices here that have been very heated the last day or so in reference to how the vote went at the town meeting. And from the people that have called me to tell me about it, they said the discussions were at a level that were very high, and a lot of involvement from different people and different departments discussing it, talking about it. And it came to me from three different people with three different aspects, being residents, employees, and, um, I wanted to bring to light tonight that that can't be happening at the town offices. The legislative body, which is the voters of the town of Dunbar, have made the decisions on the warrant articles, whose decisions are done and over with. Whether we like them or not, they can be discussed in private, but when you're taking time out of your office hours to talk about them and discuss them, especially as these group discussions are going on here, it is really affecting this building. Some of this went on before the votes were taken, in prior weeks, and I kinda let it go, even though I had people giving me information to show me that, um, electioneering or talking about these different warrants prior to that on town properties is, um, a form of a misdemeanor. I'd like to have a copy of this go out to each of the town employees at this building, cause that seems to be where it's going on. But I'd also like, Lynn, for a letter to go out to the town employees of this building to make sure that discussions on your own private time can happen, and they can happen office, but in this office, we need to, we need to pull back and take a little bit more control of that. It's really affecting the perception of the public when they're coming into the building. Some people don't wanna commit it anymore, cause they're afraid they're gonna get involved in these discussions. So, um, hearing that yesterday from three different people, um, right after the, uh, elections had happened, really, really bothered me, um, I think that, you know, we need to take a look at that and make sure that that gets toned down.
Can I speak on that, please?
Sure.
And that, um, complaint was directed towards me.
Yeah.
Okay? And I only spoke to one individual in the office, I may have been a little bit voiceful in that situation, but that one person spoke to three people, because I did not, and nobody here at, after town meeting, I did not hear anybody talk about complaints or electioneering or anything else in the office where an individual was approached. But on the other hand, two weeks before town meeting, one of those elected officials came to this office and approached a department, and I heard through their complaint that they were wondering why the town offices were so against the whole project, when in fact, nobody ever said anything. We, I didn't hear any complaints, but the, the complaint came through the office quickly. So the information you're getting, you also have to take with the greatest of, because I did not, I was never approached by anybody, and, and no one here was at electioneering, and in, in the event anyone was talking about, it was in privacy and it wasn't to someone directly.
This was talked about a lot enough, so people could hear it throughout the building, so it wasn't something that was done quietly, and it was brought to my attention by three different people and the residents of this town, so, um, it needs to be addressed and it needs to, uh, you know, we really need to, we really need to move on from here, like Bob told me, the legislative body has spoken to it and.
Yeah, we're doing it.
You know?
Absolutely.
We need to go on from it, okay?
Yeah.
And then, just cause I know you brought this up, and I was gonna tell Hope, by sending the email, they actually get put on this agenda, they get spoken about that night, so you have, it's on record, it'll be on record, that, you know, an issue has come up, it should be taken care of.
As another channel to come through to you guys, right? Is that what you're saying, the email thing?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Gotcha.
I wanna thank you for coming in, I know it's not an easy thing to do, and, um, if you guys are here to support her, thanks for coming in to support her as well. And thanks for your information and help, we'll try to get that resolved, and we'll work on it. And if we can't do it, we'll simply tell you, we can't do it till next year's budget, but we'll at least try.
Okay.
All right? But through our different avenues, we can find money in it, that's what we'll try and do.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, I, I really would like to see this taken care of, considering that I, we did try in the fall before budget season and we were just shut down, we don't have enough money.
Yeah, I, I don't think you were completely shut down, I think the facts weren't all in, and the thing is, your spokesman, your town clerk, they don't advocate strongly for you. And someone who advocates strongly for you, I would probably listen a little bit carefully. You gotta, I'd ask, sit down for the town clerk and ask her, she's gotta be a strong advocate, she's an elected official to me, she's our equal, she's not under us, she's an equal to us, and she could've advocated for us, she could've went to the voters and advocated for us, she could've, the name of the voters, act on it. I mean, she's got a lot of power.
We've done it on a warrant separately, because.
Yes.
Okay, Mike, I just wanna bring this up as well, in the last five, maybe even ten years now, the board has always said, we want level services, we want level services. And your departments really take that seriously, they ask for the bare-bones minimum, they try not to increase with an extra personnel that will cost, you know, sixty thousand dollars and go and watch, you know, the department budget increase substantially. So in, in our defense, we're trying to toe the line based on what the board has said, we want level services, so maybe going forward, even though it's an increase on the taxes, we need to revisit the needs of the town and say, please present your budget, but let's discuss what you really need, so that we are preparing your department for the new services that we need of the.
And if we don't think it fits in that year's budget, then we'll tell you at that time too.
And the town clerk is our equal, she went to the voters to get her benefits that we, that Boyd at the time denied her, and so.
And, and that's all, that's all fine.
That's happy, that's happy, you said, I don't understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we're not the final say-so all the time, the legislative body is.
But it also.
I understand.
To help us do the, have the tools that we need, maybe if you say, this is not the right year, maybe we consider putting it on an article, just like we did for the police department with the car.
And I think we split the years up with your computers too, I think we split that in two years.
And, and that's where I, no, actually, um.
Your employees.
Like we did a warrant, uh, for twenty thousand dollars.
No.
But we have a little bit of that.
Another example is like this transfer station manager. He came in with a, a request for a can crusher. And like, we, we looked at each other, when we first heard it on paper, can crusher? What kind of, what kind of garbage is this? This is like way off in left field. When he came to us, we asked him to come in and help explain to us. And the two selectmen who were there at that meeting, well, we were jumping up and down. Do you want us to write a check today? I mean, he, he was actually, he convinced us to a point where it made sense. And so sometimes, you know, he, he was a strong advocate for this department. And we, we were doubting campuses, but we listened to him.
I guess part of my question is, why was I told that we didn't have enough money when we had the ARBA grant?
When were you told to do enough money?
In the fall.
In the fall?
Yeah. After we received the ARBA grant.
Yeah, I think in June of last year, we saved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the ARBA grant.
Yeah.
At that time.
And this is gonna be less than a tenth of that.
Right. If you read the ARBA grants earlier when we first received the first portion of them, it's thirty-three pages long. What we could do and couldn't do with this.
It was very strict.
So I would, I read down through the restrictions and those type of things weren't allowable. Now as, as we get into spring. Hold on, let me finish up, okay? So as we came into the spring, we got a first notification where the treasury department released some of their requirements because the towns weren't spending money because they were scared.
Yeah, yeah.
Now you can call the treasury and ask them to consider your project. Does this look like it will work? And they won't give you an answer. It says right in that grant paperwork. So let me finish.
Yeah.
So I called the treasury to try and get some help with that building there. And they said, I can't answer that question, but we will put you on a job lot schedule, which I've never heard back from them. And the following week, just before we opened that up, we got another email that said that, um, they were gonna release, after we had already determined to use that ARBA money on that building, that they're gonna release up to ten million dollars for these towns that got ARBA grants, can use them for anything. So here we got this grant and we read through, and I did a long write-up. In fact, it's in one of my folders here in reference to what we could use after. I'm not sure if you looked at that meeting minute, but I read it out loud in here. You know, commended me on, on doing it. But I read all thirty-three of those pages. I spent five and a half hours writing that use of that grant up for the fellow select board here to vote on, which they did. And right after we got that done, they allowed us to use up to ten million dollars. It wasn't so much for our town because three hundred thousand dollars was fairly small because we have a small town. But there were towns that had millions of dollars and didn't understand how to use it. Because one line says you can use it, but you can't use it for this, you can't use it this way. It just was crazy.
So when did that, when did that change apart?
It was, uh, right after we opened up.
Right before you opened the bid. It was like February second or February first. We got an updated email saying that the, um, restrictions were being lifted and, and more relaxed. And infrastructure was one of them, so.
And I had already read the uses at the meeting there too. And we voted on it as like, or, because
Okay.
it was told mostly for infrastructure and that type of stuff, which were bridges. But you couldn't use them on roads or paving or any of those type of items.
Okay. And no, um, no computer or software was noted in there?
It was quite a while back in that.
No, we were really limited. It was to, for culverts, not road projects. For, it just had such a small.
You were getting, getting to the end of it.
Yeah.
We could have used that money for it by the end of it. But we didn't know that when we, when I was writing up the grant and looking through it. And I'm gonna tell you upfront, when I was reading through it, I was reading through it to make sure that the uses on that building were correct. I wasn't even reading it, looking to see if we could use it for computers. Because we had just updated all our town computers, so I was not looking at it.
And, and that's the point I was gonna make, huh? Even though we stress level funding, we do give consideration to changes to that, like the computers or whatever. So if it's brought to us and it's, and the argument is valid, most of the time we'll yield and we'll include that in the budget. So level funding doesn't mean that we're not gonna spend another dollar because something is gonna make it more cost effective, less labor strenuous.
So at what point, like in what month, did you realize that you had this excess surplus?
Did we realize we had it?
Yeah.
We accepted the ARBA grant.
Not the ARBA grant, the surplus.
January third, probably, the first week in January. And it, it, it changes for the fir-, the weeks during the month of January, but it pretty much stays made.
No, you mean the town surplus.
The town surplus.
Okay, we get surplus from a couple of different ways. We have extra revenues that come into the town. And then we have, um, different line items that weren't finished on budgets on all the different departments that come to us.
Right.
So we have the surplus amounts. Lynn gives us to them, um, because we like to see them early. We're trying to look at those quarterly as we go through the year. I think we looked at them in December. And because the budget season was coming and we knew those monies were important to us, we started looking at them. I think she gave it to us four or five times. So, I mean, she gave it to us a lot.
I guess my question is, I came to you in October, November about my software issue.
Yeah.
And no, I didn't come to the entire board, but I did come to one selectman and the administrator. And I was told there weren't enough funds. So does that mean I should have come to, or Linda should have come to you on repeat?
When, when she came for the budget, the budget review.
December and in January and.
No, before, before December, November, December timeframe during her budget review, she should have been a stronger advocate for that program. I don't think, you, you didn't commit with Linda for her budget, right? I don't think you did. But she presents her budget to us.
Oh, yeah, I did, I did.
But I don't recall her being terribly strong like that.
I was here.
And that, that's where I think that maybe there's shortcomings made. And I, I'm not gonna apologize on, because maybe we weren't listening well enough to her.
I think a big part of it is being told as a department head that you have to keep your budget flat. That's a big part of it.
Level services.
Level services.
Or, okay, wrong term, level services.
I've been, I've been a selectman now for five years. And I have tried to keep our budgets as level as possible by losing excess budget and trying to keep our tax rate. I know that sometimes the school can't control all of their monies and we can't either. And I think from the town leading you by the same, where sometimes we push more money towards just department to get a new truck and take it away from the fire department and the transfer station. And then when the transfer station starts up, I'll reduce those budgets and bring these ones up. And so it's, to keep a balanced budget, I've tried to move money from, you know, one department to another, try and fix as many problems as we can through a fiscal year and try and balance that all out. So when you say, do we have no money or do we have money? At the time it was brought to us, I don't think it was as. It was a critical fix. It was a critical issue. Um, and if it was brought to us as more of a critical issue, we might have looked at it differently. And now you're doing that, so we are. Yeah, you, you'll, I think you've opened our eyes. And the thing is, my first question is, I'm gonna ask the town clerk, tell us why you really need the software and see if she will still be an advocate for it. Because we're not gonna support anything that you bring up without having the blessing of the town clerk. And that's the most, you're gonna bless it. And the thing is, you know, it falls the chain again, but, but she's gonna bless it because she's respond, as an elected official, that is her department. And she's gonna be a strong advocate for her department. And in fact, you're bringing it up, I applaud you, I really applaud you for it. But you gotta get her on board strongly.
Oh, the best way to resolve this, so no one selectman can make a decision. And one selectman can say it's too expensive, but the other two might say it isn't. And this is some justice with here, that, so that no one person can make a decision here. Has to be three. So if it's brought before the three, you have probably a better resolution than just bringing it to one. That's my opinion.
And the, um, the biggest thing is getting it here, like, um, at the end of this meeting, I'll ask Bob if he has anything else on us. Mike, if he has anything else on us, the town administrator. And that's after the public has spoken. And we try and shoot different ideas off of, it's things that one selectman may think about and the other one's haven't. And maybe they go on our agenda for the following week, sometimes we forget about them. Sometimes we put them off. All depends on the urgency of what they bring up. So, um.
Can I just speak one more time? I just wanna say that as your town administrator, I work extremely hard. We all work hard and we're very minimal in staff. I don't wanna get to a point where I'm burnt out. I try to do my best to assist everybody between volunteers, committees, other departments, questions that would normally be answered out, from an outside source that we hire for assessing. We do a lot of internal support for the town so that it keeps our expenses to a minimum. And as we grow in population, those things are gonna have to stop. In the past, in, in many towns bigger than us, maybe two or three thousand or more, they have an assessor, an assessing department. They, and, and these are the things that we try to cross train everyone within the department to help. But as we get bigger with RFPs, bonds, um, other things, that takes more work on, puts more work on my plate. And then I still try to be, you know, gracious enough to assist all the volunteers and the, and the committees that don't have any pay scales so that they get the service and we don't lose all of our volunteers because they put so much time that they don't get paid for. But I, I think the time costs for yours.
I agree, I agree, Lynn, but we also have to delegate some of those, like, without too.
And, and I do buy, and a lot of times what it comes, how it comes across is, I try to cross train as many individuals to know what I know so that in the event I'm not here, there's someone else that can stand up and will speak on it.
Okay.
We're just, I, I've been growing, we really are. We're extremely busy.
And nobody's saying you don't work hard.
I, I just apologize if I lose my cool every now and then. And I seldom do, and it hasn't, it hasn't happened in a long time. It's just been, uh, very stressful in the office. And I, I have to disagree that I don't believe there have been any politicking in the town to the general public or anybody. But we will listen and answer questions if somebody comes to us. And if that's interpreted as, as politicking, that's an outside individual coming to a counter and asking questions.
The people who came in were not coming to the counter to ask questions. They were overhearing what was going on. So you've been bought and over that sort of. Okay, um, is that all you have?
Uh, Linda is here. So, and she's coming.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from her?
I don't wanna re, rehash this. I think we could take it offline and then readdress it next week. Yeah, I think the horse is due. Yeah, I think we gotta move on to.
Okay.
My thing is, I think, I think, I think you need to cut her into it.
I did know she was still here.
I need to take, probably cut her into it in discussion and. And she hasn't been privy to all this discussion, so let her watch the meeting minutes and talk with her about it in that. I don't wanna blindside Linda. She hasn't been privy to this whole conversation, so let her watch the meeting minutes. And then she can come to the board and talk with us. Okay? Thanks, Linda. Okay, um, anything else?
I don't have any else.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you ladies for coming with her. Uh, thank your husband for coming in as well. I know you're behind gentleman. We'll let you know how we make out with some of the other things too, but then we'll leave on these.
Do you want that or can I take that as my number?
She has it, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
I'm trying to get my numbers right.
Lynn, can I do that to you just so it's, uh, I don't forget to do it to you? I was gonna put it with the mentors. All right, I'm gonna go back to our meeting minutes here. Just the agenda. Thank you, Mike. Okay. I have in my hands here, um, something I have aside. It looks like, um, the transfer station department, Woody Bone, Bomb, has received a grant in the amount of twenty-nine hundred and eighteen dollars um, to help with the purchase of forty-foot shipping containers that he has on site. And I wanna applaud him for applying for this grant. And do one of you guys wanna make a motion to accept that grant?
I'll make a motion for RSA thirty-one oh nine-five dash B, subpar paragraph, minimum three B, to accept two thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars in a grant received from New Hampshire, the Beautiful.
Second. Motion made second, any discussion?
Who goes to Woody?
Wanna let him know that we're thanking him for applying for that?
Yeah.
And, uh, motion made second, I'll favor. All right, okay.
Just for a point, if that goes to the general fund?
Unless you guys specify where you want that to go. I know that there's already been a, a request from the police department for additional funding for that, um.
I'm keeping the general fund for.
If it goes in the general fund, then we can at least use it. Now, we did pay, um, for the shipping container.
Exactly, so it's only like a small reimbursement.
Will, will shipping containers have a, who, who, when he got those, were out of his budget, right? The shipping containers?
Yeah, and he had encumbered, uh, a full request of ten grand from the prior year. So we received those in twenty twenty-one, but we encumbered money from twenty twenty. So the combined encumbered plus, uh, some lapsing funds, he was able to get that.
Okay. And he hasn't said anything while using this money for elections?
Oh, he did in the email.
He did?
Oh, what he actually wanted the board to do is apply it to the warrant article, but you can't do that, that's gonna go in on the floor from taxes.
So we'll put it in the general fund then.
Yeah, for now. And if, if you decide to do something with it later in the year, you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's almost enough to apply to the, uh, to the police for their three thousand dollar request.
Well, I think the police has, is more than that. I think it's close to five grand.
Well, I understand that the request we had last week, when they had the officer come in for that team. Oh, yeah. Was the three thousand dollar cost and it almost cleans that up, you know?
I told you, I'm just looking for another request. I'd like to hear again.
No, I'm just, it's just like, it seems like it would take care of that and minimize it.
I think he, Chris said he put like forty-five hundred in this calendar year and was planning on doing it for the next five years for the best.
Yeah, so this will allow it to be done in two years, right?
Correct, the grant, and then it would cut it by about three thousand because, um, at the end it'll cost for five years, over five years.
And we had to match half of eighteen thousand, right?
Correct. And so what he was asking for is ninety-five hundred total. He said that he has about, I don't know, it's thirty-five or forty-five.
I think it was thirty-five.
In his budget line, so there's still.
Okay, the next thing I have on the agenda here is a discussion on the library edition paper.
Can I speak on this?
Yeah.
So, um, I want, I'd like the board to consider discussing, as I know, the ARBA does say that the, the award of the contract will be by April first. Um, but where Bob has been instrumental with the board to discuss it, um, or to accommodate through this whole process, I think would be, um, helpful for the two board members that are gonna act on the motion to be able to review the bid proposal that came in that was voted on on Tuesday and that was passed so that we can at least, I mean, if you wanna wait, that's okay with you as well. But the contract does say that it's good for ninety days.
Actually, the board, well, actually, everybody has spoken activity, move on it. So we can, uh, seal the, seal the contract. Bob, what's your feelings?
Yeah, I was, I was reading this on the, on the side, so.
So what I did provide to you, um, just a couple of things that you should consider as well if you go on a tour tonight is, I took that, um, request for proposals of sixty-four pages long, or some un, 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 pages. So I took just the pages that I wanted to bring to your attention, the, um, article for insurance. This sample section doesn't have any numbers in there. But, uh, on the following page, it says a contractor shall provide builder's risk insurance to cover the total value of the entire project on a replacement cost basis. So if the board's going to consider accepting the bid tonight, then for my department, for accounting purposes, I would like to see, um, a, uh, let's see here. I would like to see a bond certificate naming the town as the insured party in the amount of a million dollars. That's the number we have using the town. The board can decide how much that, that the.
Not a, not a bond certificate.
Uh, that's what it's written in here.
Yeah, um, that section from, well, let me, um, I guess, let me now speak to you and get down that right path if I could.
Yeah.
Um, Dennis Myers called me today. He got a call from Margaret explaining that the, um, town hall restoration, uh, project had passed. Gary Chacon was at the meeting. He also called yesterday and asked what he should do. And I told him, I said, uh, he asked if I wanted to develop, um, I don't have it written here, the APIA contract. And I told him it would be good if he developed. And I talked with Dennis Myers today and he said it's fine if Gary wants to develop that contract. In this agreement, I do think it's important while Bob is here for them to vote on it. Um, but knowing full well, this is a bid proposal and not the exact contract. So even though you, uh, make a motion to accept the bid proposal with that amount, uh, know that the ATI contract will come. And in here, what we're more concerned about is the liability insurance as well as that insurance. We made sure that the contractors admittedly were bondable construction companies, but we did not require a bond on this only because it would require another seventy thousand dollars added to the, that entire job.
So that's why the bond word came.
Yeah, so that's why, uh, we pulled that wording out. But they do have to have the general liability insurance and then the, uh, let's see, other insurance line up.
Certificate of mind, I mean, and it's usually just names of town as the insured.
That's right. Oh, and builder's risk as well.
Builder's risk.
Which sometimes they do on holdings do that, that's for more theft on jobs, but, so. This bid proposal is six ninety-seven, four eight five. Um, Chacon is sending out to all of his subcontractors that have comprised this bid and making sure that since he bid this, that nothing has changed price-wise with their vendors so he can seal up the bid himself and send us an API contract. The other thing is, um, in talking with Dennis Myers today, there are two other items, the addendums on there, one of which is the, um, walkway around the building for five thousand fifty dollars and the ERV, air recovery unit for fifty-seven four hundred. The lift upstairs, um, from what I heard at the town meeting, was gonna be provided by a donation. So that twenty-one hundred, we won't act on. But the fifty-seven four hundred and the ERV and the walkway around the building for five thousand fifty dollars, which were discussed at the town meeting, um, will be on a separate contract that the contractor will be responsible for. But those funds will come out of our, uh, maintenance fund this year, like we had already agreed upon.
I think we agreed on the, uh, at the, uh, the ERV, but I don't think we agreed on the walkway.
The walkway, the walkway has to be put in, uh, for the entrance and it was not on the original. The walkway, the walkway has to be put in uh for the entrance, and it was not on the original. These three items are what was agreed upon that night. These are the meetings from that night, Mike.
Was that the, oh, the um.
The, those are our special meetings, I brought them with me tonight.
Okay, so we don't see those, that's from the your group?
No.
No, that's mine.
That's from us.
Yeah, I know, we were talking about the uh the lift on the stage, was not considered, that was uh delayed.
Yeah, yeah, they, and and like I thought, they had, they did volunteer to do that. So these are the three things that were discussed on that meeting. Um we asked them to leave these alternative optional items so that they're aren't confused with what was in the original.
No, the thing is, I talked with a member of the committee, of the renovation committee, and they were not exactly uh enamored with the the walkway, so I was, they didn't think it was a critical.
And um when you guys, yeah, when you have the egress out the front of the building, that walkway has to stay clear with snow. Um you know, when our forefathers took that walkway around the thirteen, even though people don't walk to thirteen, by keeping that path open, it allowed that building to have a second means egress.
Okay.
And.
So it has to be done.
It has to.
Part of the C.
Yeah.
See, I didn't think Margaret knew that.
Yes.
That's why she said she was like, that's why I said she.
A lot of people don't understand, I've been Dennis Myers, the reason he put out his last plan
Yeah.
is 'cause it was required, and the same thing with ERV. But when we bid the job with Chacon, the preliminary bid back in June, neither of those items were on there. So that's why I wanted him to separate his alternates, because his original bid didn't have them in it.
Okay, so most demand required on the left.
Yeah, so I'd like you guys to do two separate votes if you guys were gonna. I'm gonna abstain.
Yep, well, I I move to accept the bid as proposed by Eric Chacon Construction Corporation dated two-two twenty-two in an amount of six-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Discussion, Bob. Again, this is just accepting the bid.
Well, accepting a bid, I'm, you know, okay, that's included, so.
So I.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Okay.
Now, if you could do the next two items, Mike, I'd like to see where those funds are coming from.
And while I make a proposal, I like to make a proposal.
Hold on, Mike, can you just state for your last bid where the funds for that is coming from?
Oh, okay, that goes back to the warrant. Oh. Well, you just.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna amend, make an amendment to the motion in the sense that it was as as funded by the legis- as funded by the legislative body.
On the warrant.
On the warrant.
Perfect.
Warren six.
Warren six.
Article six.
Article six.
Article six.
Very good, Mike.
Okay. Do it, get out of speaking on that stuff.
Alright.
Alright. And then Bob, we have to, we have to make another two motions and uh we can make them all or one if you.
I'd like to make a second motion, Bob, that we find the the walkway and the ERV and related work in amount of fifty-seven-thousand-four-hundred for the ERV and the amount of five-thousand-fifty dollars for the walkway around the building for egress.
As alternates to the bid.
As alternates to the bid. And this funding is to come from our maintenance line.
Okay.
I'll circuit that. You know, 'cause you don't, you didn't need the second one, the lift.
Correct. No, the volunteers have done that, so.
And in discussion, Bob, I I originally thought that as I was saying, Dave, the walkway was not needed, I thought it was not needed, but uh hearing discussion, that egress is needed for the egress safety portion.
It will take more snow blowing around that building in the winter, but it needs to be done.
Okay.
Can I just touch on that, I saw that part of the bid is a contribution from the town that the air restoration or town hall.
That was in the uh warrant.
I know, but we still have to have a public hearing to accept that.
Oh, yes, yes.
So I just wanna remind you that as soon as they have a true bounty, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything over ten thousand, you have a public hearing.
'Cause I thought we had the public hearing already. We had a public hearing down there.
No, 'cause I'm like, and they wouldn't give it to us if the article didn't pass.
Okay.
That's true.
So we do have to have it.
Alright.
Just accept that, formally, you accept the money.
Yeah, so just remind the the group that they have to do that.
I'll do that.
Give you a final number that um hopefully you consider that.
I'm getting it, some words and then I.
Okay.
Sorry.
You didn't include a total.
I I separ- I separated them out. I kept them separate line items.
Tell them the challenge, you guys?
Be six.
Sixty-two.
Hold on. Sixty-two, four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, sixty-two, four hundred and fifty, okay.
For a total amount of sixty-two, sixty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit.
Sure. I I I believe so, okay. Can we have a discussion, Bob?
No other discussion.
Okay.
Um. I think that's a good way to do it, clears the slate for for Justin with stuff that was worked on previously with you, Bob.
Yeah.
Um I just wanna note, want you to know that there will be a contract coming through to bank up this paperwork. And um that contract will be made out, and Dennis is gonna review it, and then you as our board.
Okay, so we two separate contracts, you separate.
I would think uh either contract and alternates, or yeah, it should be two separate pieces, I think.
So Mike, you're moving ahead, so.
That's good, I still discuss this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One more thing?
Yes.
Maybe with all that, you're gonna ask them to provide our payment schedule, they have their proof? And the board has their proof?
That would come with the contract.
I think it's in the last part of that API contract.
Okay, alright, and we'll need that, to work that well with the um sprinkler system, we're just looking at the contract, it's very clear.
Okay. There, sprinkler contract, okay, one. Okay, I brought that up, I like this um John, um the fire chief, brought up to me that there was another bill in the office of the sprinklers, I said, well, jeez, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. And then um when Bob and I were signing last night, when we had done our meeting, um it was it was in there, and I said, well, jeez, I, I leaned in, show it to me, and that's why it was a payment schedule already.
Well, he actually sent emails right directly to Jared, either if he gets it in the mail or through AP, but it's basically going through that total amount and then.
So you were following his payment schedule he gave us originally, okay. If it deviates from that, Lee, can you give me a heads up, 'cause I'm going there weekly and checking their work
Okay.
and their progress, so I wanna follow through with it. Sorry, Mike.
No, it's alright, I want to bring up point of order.
Yep.
Um Dave, you recuse yourself because your relationship with the.
That's right.
Okay, um in the event that um he uses Beltis as a supplier, I like to get a a request, a letter from the president of the company that there'll be no financial gain that he will gain from this, uh coming from the president of the company. And I can have that be asked by the town administrator on behalf of this letter, just to keep things above board, and like you may have questions for anything.
May not come from the president, it'll come from somebody else.
Well, let it come to Lee, let it lead him to play. And uh so that way, I don't care where it gets his materials, I think his materials would be the cheapest he can get.
Yeah.
But the thing is, if Beltis is fine, I have no problem with Beltis, but things, I just wanna try to keep a select bin completely honest.
Yeah.
You know, not that, not that you.
You don't have to try and keep me honest.
No, no, it's the perception, it's the perception.
Well, the other thing too is uh it could be viewed differently by the ethics committee, so it makes it clean anyhow.
It does, and Lee, can you do that?
Yeah.
Protects him more than.
Well, everyone else.
Because somebody could accuse him of something.
Absolutely.
And he hasn't even done something.
Right, and I'd rather keep it, someone say, hey, the company has stated this, and that way it's on record.
Lee, we have an administrative deal, but I'll give you her contact information on that.
Are you gonna be able to consensus it? Consensus?
Yeah. Yeah, we had already spoken to that.
Yeah, I just wanna, this, this keeps it from being criticized.
Um. What else do we have here? Going on through the agenda, I guess, now, Mike, are you done with everything you had?
I'm good here, I agree.
I have a big proposal, I want to make sure I have no more notes on it.
I just got a.
Platinum proof already. Town Hall Contract API, I forget that. We talked about the request for pricing for the roof already, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about the roof, it's been over a year on this. I have a few other items on my agenda here. If I put this contract away. This is my copy of it. Okay, the other thing I have on here is uh we had a bill come in from Eric Hodgman, I told him I'd bring it in front of the board um tonight. Um he gave us um original bill for that box, which he had on the ballot boxes, and he gave us a copy of his original bid. The original bid was for thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars um for the two boxes. Um after we had done that original bid, we asked him to make those boxes um bigger to match the supply of the aluminum ones instead of matching the supply of the the size of the original sized one. So um and looking at the larger sizes, they're about thirty percent bigger than his original bid, so he added um thirty percent to the price for the larger size of three hundred dollars. And he put the additional labor in there for the support lifts and buying the lid openers which hold those tops open so the hinges don't get broken of a hundred dollars. Um and he included all the hardware in there, which I told him I had for, but he isn't. Oh, he did put the hardware in here. So he does have the hardware listed separate, which I did ask him for.
Those two bid, two bills, they were.
Two bills.
Okay.
The additional charges are five-hundred-and-four dollars and ninety cents for the hardware, the additional size, and for the lid supports. And the original bid was thirteen-thirty-eight. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept these two um complete price packages from Eric on those, because these were running changes and the hardware was supposed to be handled by us. Can we have a second?
Second, but I'd like to hear a total of the bid, so it's.
So thirteen-thirty-eight plus five oh four.
I'll get my calculator later on. Eighteen-thirty-eight.
Eighteen forty-two?
Eighteen hundred forty-two.
Eighteen forty-two.
Uh, I'll cite that.
Okay, motion's been made and second, all in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, Mike?
Yes, I just wanna say that the uh, I saw, you and them, the boxes came out great. And I had my hat off to Eric Hodgman, he did a great job.
Most of the people who brought their ballots a surprise to see the new boxes.
Uh I think it was a very, a very uplifting thing to show the boxes at the beginning of the meeting, I think a lot of people really appreciated.
And for the record, it was made with Dunbarton wood.
Yeah.
Dunbarton oak. Okay.
Stick these on the agenda.
Now, call the vote.
Um, motion's been made second, or motion been made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's done. Um I have on my agenda here to welcome the new selectman, Justin. Uh thanks for coming to our meeting to get updated on how the meeting's run. Um next week you'll be sworn in, so you'll be able to sit in next week's meeting. And I say, I wanna say one thing, it was nice to see two younger people trying to go out for a uh a selectman's position in this town. Uh we wanna try and get some younger people volunteering for jobs in this town.
I knew he was discriminated against, we.
Well, couldn't be, Mike, but uh.
He's saying succession.
I colored my hair up today just to be myself on camera.
It was you, it was you.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you for uh putting your hat in the bag and trying to run for it, it's not an easy thing to do, it's it's a time, uh more than anything, it's a time-sensitive thing that you've gotta volunteer to.
Ready for the challenge.
Um one last thing I wanna say on here is, next week at the end of next meeting, Mike, when we decide on all the different uh things in there, I am gonna honor mine, if you, if your heart's still in it, to become the chair for.
Still in the air.
Still beating, so I'm good.
You're good? And if you would like to do it.
I think so.
Okay. Um so I'm gonna honor that after next week's meeting as part of that meeting, I just wanted to give you a heads up so you didn't have to squint all week.
Oh, it's. So you're gonna stand for the uh appointments or the uh.
We'll do that next week, yeah. And uh I'll be happy to sit on the sidelines for a little while.
Hey, just 'cause you're inside, like, it doesn't mean you need to do it.
Oh, no.
How about, Justin, I just need, I just need a talent to let the be.
Um, the next thing that I have on my list here is I got a note from Donna, September eighth, which is this coming uh calendar. September eighth?
September.
Well, that's September, September.
I thought she sent me a, is it the eighth of uh from March?
April eighth, a Wednesday?
It's gonna be April eighth, is the joint loss, the next joint loss.
Yes, it is, April.
April, sorry about that, I don't know how it is September.
Oh, March uh.
Sixteenth.
Why she wants to know who that, who I.
She was wondering how joint loss was, but did you get the email too?
I did, I just didn't have a cancel.
I think it's March sixteenth, isn't it?
I think she wanted me to check something, can you go check the email for me?
Yeah.
It was much, she wanted to know quickly.
Yeah, so that somebody could make the next meeting is what I'm thinking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, if it does need to be decided early.
Um, that's, yeah, that's next Wednesday.
Yeah. So we gotta decide tonight.
Yeah, we get that one, we can decide tonight.
What's next Wednesday?
The sixteenth.
Yeah.
It's the sixteenth?
It's the sixteenth, yeah.
Why do I have the eighth right now?
I have no idea, but I remember getting the, seeing the email.
Yeah, I do too. Okay, so if it is the sixteenth, she was asking, and that makes more sense. Um joint loss, Justin, just so you know, it's a committee of people that get together. Normally, the um road agent comes in. Early, and the selectmen's rep on it, it's generally a morning meeting, we look at different buildings on town. Sometimes we focus on the transfer station, then we had the highway department, then we went to the uh police department slash fire department, and then we looked at this building, we've looked at a few things over the town. And they're looking for things that um maybe aren't operating correctly, or some safety issue that we can resolve. Uh if the door is leaking, or if there's asbestos on the pipes, or something that's uh kinda critical to the workspace, and we try and come back and resolve those, whether it's the selectman or some other board entity.
Yeah, most of the time you can bring it to the select board, but it would be a good spot for them to start out with. And I say that only 'cause you're gonna learn what all the different problematic areas are.
Next Wednesday.
Is it all stuff that they bring to you, or is it?
No, no, you, they'll have a meeting here, they'll have a meeting here, and then if they go inspect something, it might be the fire station, or the library, or over at the transfer station, or Jeff's place, but you'll learn some of the things that might need some kind of uh attention.
So um the meeting, Justin, if you do accept to go on the joint loss board, uh would be Wednesday the sixteenth at eight fifteen AM. Is that something you're willing to do?
It's a, it's a monthly meeting.
Quarterly.
Quarterly, quarterly.
And um.
You're really hard.
So it's a quarterly meeting, and and for some reason you have a conflict of interest and you can't make it on the schedule. Um they always do have meeting minutes, and you can follow up with Donna or somebody else who is not.
Yeah, you'll be included in the email, so.
Yeah.
Joint loss.
Joint loss, yeah, joint loss, eight fifteen Wednesday.
I'll forward you the uh email from Donna, is he willing to take this?
Sounds like it.
Sound forward it to you.
Mike, I'll make the motion.
I see.
Alright, he's in. Bob? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, I, you know.
Don't abstain from your last vote, Bob. Alright, Justin, here is the new joint loss representative from the selectmen's office. Make sure to get signed in um Monday for Monday. 'Cause if you're gonna go to the meeting, you're gonna be acting on behalf of the selectman.
Are you coming in this spring tomorrow?
Uh, no, I technically can't till Monday.
Well, you can after five-thirty tomorrow, five o'clock.
She calls, usually calls everyone in from five o'clock.
She does.
Oh, sure.
She does in terms of, she comes in on her day off and doesn't, I'm not sure why.
I didn't let you, I didn't let you work on Friday, that's why.
Yeah, she comes in on a special for that, but you can confirm that, she's still here.
I can confirm that.
Yeah, would you confirm that now before?
She can swear with her hand for assortment and joint loss.
Yeah, before she.
Um, the next thing on my agenda was to thank Eric Hodgman, which we've already done for those fine boxes. Um and then I have one other thing on here, um I would like to make sure in the spring we're ready for transfer of employees down at the transfer station. As we know, in the spring it generally becomes. I would like to list that position again on Indeed.
It already, well, it's already on our own, our own website. We still have it there. I've not put it on Indeed, but I think before you do that, he, Woody's asked to come in to talk to the selectman next week. And one of them is personnel.
I know, so let's go ahead and list it in Indeed.
Oh, okay, but what am I listing, just an intended?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll start with that because irregardless, I know we, we needed another attendant to be trained. All went along and we kind of pushed it off and we probably shouldn't have. So, let's go ahead and get one. Irregardless of what happens this spring, we'll need one more for sure, so.
Want to corollary? Woody's been doing the driving. And we have a proposal from Waste Management to actually calm our trash recycling work with the fee schedule. You know, I have it, I can share that with, with you and I can share with him, the new selectmen in the sense that we, if it comes down to a problem, we can let someone else haul and let Woody actually run the station as an interim. Use the current vehicle just to move out the, the boxes as needed. I'm going to, we can talk about that next week.
Yeah, that'd be great. Why don't you forward that information to Justin and myself?
I will. The thing is, it just has an alternative method of doing it. And because, you know, you have one person working alone, it's not necessarily a safety, a good safety.
Lean can, I know we're giving a lot of stuff to do. Can you make sure to delegate some of it?
I can't, Dave. These are things that is impossible. I spend more time supervising and it's just quicker for me to just get it out. But I won't.
It's your job, but you've got to run and delegate some of it, Lean. You can't take it all. If you train somebody once, I'm calling Indeed, they can do it the rest of the time.
Oh, for Indeed?
Any of these things.
That's, that's easy, it's already in there.
I know, but just look at some of the items, okay? Because we're giving you a lot of stuff.
Is it worthwhile to allow to have Eric a few more hours as an interim? Thank you. He worked up to forty hours for an interim position for a few weeks.
I think that might be a discussion for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll be out for a couple days next week.
Just see first, see just, see if he's willing to work a few more, up to forty hours. For, add some more hours than.
I'm going to put the two bits in here, okay?
Do that be a possibility?
That's part, and, and I'm a part-time worker.
Part-time worker, we can do that. We do it at the transfer station.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go on to the mailbox items and I'll conduct the selectmen.
Do you need any public comment?
No, the mailbox first.
I don't know, the public want to speak for the mailbox.
I have to do the mailbox first.
Yeah.
I almost pushed it aside and forgot about it.
That'd be great.
Okay. There's a public notice here about the school district meeting. It'll be Saturday, March twelfth is Saturday at four P.M. And that will be at the Dunbarton Elementary School as well. Everybody should have gotten this flyer in the mail. I did. And so, that's good notice if anybody wants to go in there. And I do want to let them know that the area agreement is up this year to be voted on. So, that's a pretty, a pretty big thing to be looking at. And the area agreement is going to be good for fifteen years instead of ten years now. And they've kind of changed around what they're required or asking for, for each student, for their capital reserve fund. It was a four hundred dollar request before and now it's going to be an eight hundred dollar request. So, it's equivalent almost to what we, to two percent, which is what most all of the different districts get. But we had quite a brain from that when we went to them originally.
And then, can I just touch on that?
Yeah.
Attend the bond hearing. In the first year that it goes live, it'll be a ninety thousand dollar increase. And then going forward under the fifteen year period, there is also a C.P.I. with that eight hundred dollars. As part of the agreement.
And there's one other thing that I read through this last night. I read it from cover to cover to try and get a base on it. Apparently, in their old area agreement with Bo, there was just some discrepancy on how they gave the special education student billing. And we ended up owing a four hundred thousand dollars, which would be paid two hundred thousand dollars out of this budget, two hundred thousand out of next year's budget.
Wow, how did you miss that?
So, something to do with the wording, I'm sure, but I haven't gotten to the bottom of it yet. But I imagine if we go to their meeting, they'll explain that issue in here. But there is a warrant and there is discussion in relation to it. So, I think it's an important meeting.
I just heard also that, you know, the, the controversy about the artificial term at high school level. We have no say so on it, but we're going to be probably taxed for it.
Yeah, the bond.
The bond.
Well, the C.P.I. will be part of the bond.
Yeah.
Right.
But no, our C.P.I. doesn't go into effect until two years of renewal. On exactly the two hundred thousand?
Our old one.
Okay.
Our old one, if they have a warrant article for that artificial term, then they can use our other stuff. It has to be on a warrant article.
Interesting, okay.
They can't just use it for maintenance as they can now when they split the four hundred and four hundred. Okay. Okay. We're receipt of Amerimac County Notice of Zoom Meeting on Proposed Twenty Twenty Two Budget. I think we all got this email correctly.
I've fallen in the email, it's usually very, we get that in like before the, the discussion, it's pretty detailed.
The date on the meeting is ten A.M. on Friday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Tomorrow? Mm-hmm. I thought they did give an email a reference to this though.
Oh, did you? I don't recall seeing anything.
Okay, for those of us that want to go to that. Election results. I guess I'll just read down.
Oh, they, they were posted, Dave, right?
They were.
I made a motion you pass that.
Okay. Mike's going to let me pass reading of the election results they have posted on their website?
Yeah, and I'm going to.
Okay.
See you Monday.
Thank you very much.
We'll have one article that's been, that's, article five, because the bond passed.
Right.
It says article five is passed over. Why is there no red writing under article number six?
About, that's your town clerk, those are her minutes.
They are.
That's what she posts.
Can you do me a favor and ask her that?
I mean, I'm sure she just did it in the bullet item, but already missed it.
Well, this is what's on our town website.
Yeah.
And under article six, it says nothing.
What's down below, is that on the second?
Article seven.
Okay, so she must have known on that, okay.
Could you ask her to repost it afterwards for me?
Yeah, I will.
I was asked by somebody if our town did that and I said absolutely not.
Did they?
Did this, if, if we did it at the town level, not at the town clerk, but in our office, I said absolutely not.
Oh, no, that, I, I actually posted it out here because she forgot. She said she was here until three o'clock trying to get it.
I left here at twelve thirty-eight and liked it as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm sure it was just an oversight. So, if you want to add note that it passed.
Yeah, I think so, we should repost it, don't you think?
Absolutely.
Just so it's clear in the future as well, because people will refer back to that posting.
Absolutely.
Well, those aren't the final minutes now, that's just an F.Y.O. for the public to know what happened. She has to put a lot more detail of the discussion.
The minutes, yeah.
But you don't, you know, on our website, people will always be bringing it up and they're like, well, what happened?
Did it pass or not?
Yeah, I know, I didn't know, I didn't even notice that was missing.
Somebody brought it to my attention and thought we did it and I said, we haven't done it to it.
I did.
All right, I have, I have a complaint here from Mike, I mean, one of our residents on Kelsey Road. He said there was a rock in the traveled way. Road agent was notified by Lean. There was also pictures of this rock. It was a rock about five or six inches.
Is that with my main main box?
And this rock was taped to one of our posts here at this building. And I think that's kind of an unfortunate place to put it. But anyway, the proper people then notified. It says it was in the travel portion of the road, but the pictures clearly showed off on the edge of the road that Lean has.
Yeah, and the road's pleasant flat.
So, kind of a non-issue, I think.
Usually you just pick it up and throw it to the side.
Right. After the grader sometimes go through those in there and we move them out of the road all the time, so.
Well, the thing is, it's been still piled all year and picked it up in this movement. No, it's not, it's not issues.
I mean, this is the muddy season and when they plow in the roads, as they're going to have to again this Saturday, some rocks get lifted up. It's part of living on that road. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to public comment.
Couple of times I, I heard about the, the town hall restoration committee running up a proposed use for the upstairs.
Yeah.
I read it again at the meeting.
Yeah, did you see it?
Nope.
Now, they gave it to us.
Is it online or?
They gave it to us for review and it is a proposed.
Just to do some.
And we haven't accepted it yet, so that's why you haven't seen it anywhere posted online. So, we reviewed it. We didn't have any findings really with it wrong or right or indifferent. There were some things I made sure that the, our office here and, and all of our town meetings have precedent of any other meeting in there.
I understand that, yeah.
And I was even, one thing concerned to me is I've been thinking about a, someone, a designated person, paid person to open and close and secure the building, secure the heating of the building, air conditioning, and maybe a small usage fee for those non-town and sort of things. I would say it's a work in progress.
Right, okay, right. I was just going to say, we don't have to review everything, we know.
No.
It's a work in progress. I would like to see a copy of that prior to, at least here, prior to everybody accepting.
I don't mind if you want to go and ask Lean for a copy when you get.
No, you can share, we'll share a copy.
Well, not right now.
No, but at your convenience.
Anyway, I just like to look at that and see what, I mean, you know, seeing how we all paying for this. And it could be fair town, you know?
Yeah, and as far as I can see, I think we did try and do that, Leo, but more eyes the better. And.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And I think, Leo, that may be a work in progress, especially as we start using that. And we find something doesn't work or does work.
We need a lot, yes.
So.
Yeah, I, I shared that with Margaret and we had a good discussion about that. She had some ideas, we were differing, but the thing is, I said it's going to be a living document because it's going to change as we learn from the.
Because that small amount of fee might turn out to be a little more because you might find that the town's paying for more than they should be paying.
Absolutely, I would like to have it at zero cost to the town.
Well, I'd like to see slush funding, as I said, when there's things need to be repaired. Oh, you have to come back to people to get money.
And that's.
This is, it's open rent data slush kitty.
And that's, that's one of the discussions I was having. It allows the fee would go to a maintenance line to support that upstairs. Yeah, so those are discussions where we were going to have.
All right, so that was my first thing anyways. So, I'll be glad to get a copy of that at some point. And also I'd like to thank Bo for six years of great service to the community.
My office was great when I was there.
No, I meant the great community.
Take all the wind out of my sails. Okay, is that it, Leo?
Yeah.
Thank you. Bring it back to our town administrator.
I received an email from Woody. I'm just going to touch on the first item. He said that the lights at the transfer station have been fixed.
Oh, good.
Okay. I'm currently working on bond application. I've reached out to the bond bank, I'm just waiting to hear back. They did, they did say that they would provide with, with all the support I need. I also C.C.ed our attorney that the board agreed for services with, which is by, by the bond bank. We're going to nameplate for, for Justin and I got a lot of other auditing, auditing services. We'll start again at the end of April, so we'll be visiting the office between everything that's going through the R.F.B.'s.
Right. Let us know if there's any help we need with the auditor. And.
He did say that I have a good, clean management letter that will be coming from the twenty twenties, which is the best response. It just wasn't ready because they had to work on the financial so that we can set the tax rate in twenty twenty-one. But they didn't have the other information.
Speaking of that, Lean, we had one resident come in at town meeting.
He did approach me, that would be.
Do you think we could fit it in there?
Yeah, I will, absolutely. And he said my response was perfect, but, you know, it's usually a two-page letter that, that basically says that the town's been audited and that, no, no findings, clean response, that type of thing.
A couple of reports were fairly lengthy. Do we need to, the departments to shorten them up next year for you?
I have attempted that in the past because if we get to the pound weight, I can't mail it through.
We may need to reject some next year and have them consolidate a little bit.
Maybe I'll start a little bit earlier and remind them and ask them to shorten it.
Yeah, you can have the big font, you can have the smaller font.
No, I think there was a few, well, see.
Were a few lengthy ones.
Well, town meeting, you can't shorten. The school pays and reimburses us for their side of their, you know, their.
But that's important too, because they have their articles and stuff. But a lot of the other departments were lengthy, might need to reword a few things to shorten them up.
Yeah, one of the suggestions that was brought back before, I talked with Lean about this offline. And do we have to mail them? That's the question I have.
Well, we should have brought that up at town meeting under, under regular business.
I like it mailed out.
And we did maybe five years ago. Chuck Grable was on the board just to fill in.
Oh, yeah.
He was on the board for a short, for like a fill-in for one year.
You know, Mike, if people mad now, because we have a public meeting like we do and you see hardly anybody comes.
Yeah.
And then we have the town meeting and they don't come. At least if that book is at their doorstep and they don't come, that notice is on them because we've notified them. And you know, some people will go home and look at our website, don't look at the town thing, they live in different parts of town. But by mailing that to them, they know it's on that agenda. If they don't show up, shame on them.
Okay. Well, the thing is, I, I, then I'd like to keep in there reports to essential items of interest.
Because it, and it is one more of those old town, small thing where everybody gets one. And I kind of like that old town aspect of it. The other way is going more like the S.B. two term.
Lean was right, they tried that a few years ago and there were a lot of complaints.
Well, the vote was, no, we're, and they brought it up to stop mailing it.
Yeah.
And the vote was turned down and they wanted it mailed. And that's not the expensive part, it's the printing part. I mean, this year it was on, just under five hundred and the past has been like just under three hundred. So, it is going up, but as the weight continues, the quantity, I had to order an extra forty at the last minute to try to have additional office copies, ones for the other, you know, for the school and whatnot, and have a few on hand.
Is Woody looking for someone as they come in?
I don't think so, but.
Yeah, we don't want a horn anyway, but.
I think we'll be okay at this point.
Okay, no.
I'm just holding off on distributing to people who just want extra copies until I get through the, the lull that I make sure everyone has the copies that we need.
Anything else?
I don't think there's nothing that, so I'm going to put town clerk on the agenda for next week. Hopefully, it can be, I come up with something.
Yeah, I think, and if they have any information for us, if they want to wait two weeks to get more information, that's fine too. Doesn't have to be, you know, let, ask them when they'd like to come in if they want to wait to receive their information. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Because she was, but I would, I would almost rather them have the information than come in and rehash the whole thing without the information because we tend to not be talking about it without the information tonight.
Well, I think the only information we're looking for is the financing part of it. And that's my office.
And then her commitment if Linda's committed to do it. As a department head. Mike, anything else to go?
Yes, that's, the department chief come to me, one of, one of the departments in town. He has a potential civil lawsuit. I gave him direction to consult with the town attorney. He has done so. It will be almost an hour bill, but it was worthwhile. He felt that we were okay under two state statutes and has delineated a process for this town employee to follow. And I'll leave it at that because nothing has surfaced yet, but it was enough, enough concern to at least consult with the town attorney.
Okay. Thank you. Well, do you have any?
Yeah, well, I've got a few. One of them is I want to commend Hope Barcy for coming in and bringing her concerns and I hope she doesn't, didn't feel dismissed because we are listening. And I, I know that we've been trying to keep a healthy maintenance budget. So, I'm sure that, you know, as things go along, these, some of these things will get corrected. So I, I just don't want her to feel like we were condescending, and, uh, she was respected when she was in, that's one. I wanna thank the select board that I worked with, cause I think we work very well together. We've tried to resolve problems, and we've tried to listen to people and make people feel like they are important when they come to us. Uh, and I'll thank the residents in this town. Uh, I enjoy doing this job. Uh, and, uh, you know, I really thank them for, uh, yeah, electing me the two times that I was in this office. And I guess the, uh, the other thing is, I wanna thank the employees for the kind they pay me, cause it makes me feel a, a little bit appreciated. So with that, uh, you know, I wish you guys, and I wish Justin, some success, and I just want you guys to remember what the maintenance budget is for, so to address these concerns. And, uh, like I said at the, uh, town meeting, the can was kicked down the road pretty high, and, but now we should be addressing all the things we need to do.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Um, I got a letter here, or a card today, it just opened. Um, this is from Dawn and Edith, Edith?
Mm-hmm.
Larson, well, I'm trying to make sure it's saying it right. She doesn't like to be called Edith, I found out. Um. We want to let you three know what a pleasure it has been working with you and to tell you once again how much we appreciate all you did to make the renovation project happen. We could have never done it without all of the support you put behind it. Dawn and Edlar, Edith Larson. So, they sent to thank you, the board, and, uh, thanked them for their support as well. It all went well, and the board did, um, you know, support that project, and it's been a long, ongoing project, uh, and I think that, you know, a lot of townspeople called up on the last day or so, and thanked us for, for putting that in after the meeting, and I think it was well worthwhile. Um, I wanna go on behalf of the board and thank Bob for his services, and for the town, like I did at the town meeting. Um, six years is a long time to sit up here, Bob, and listen to all the concerns of the town, and take time out of your schedule. And it's been appreciated by the board here, as well as all the town people.
Well, it's been my pleasure to serve the town, to be honest with you.
Every different viewpoint's appreciated, cause who comes to that, thinks from a different angle than, different than Mike and myself, and it really helps to round out a board. And so.
And I'd be the one thought, though. Takes three to make the decision.
There you go.
Thank you.
Um, and as far as the maintenance.
Justin, you gotta note, remember that, because I've been guilty of it, this gentleman's been guilty of it, and peo- people in the past have been guilty of it. We're oligarchy, we rule by three, not by.
Yeah, if you look at the size, man, I'm almost the size of three.
Talking about a long board, huh?
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's very important to keep in mind.
And listening, and listening to Bob have referenced the maintenance budget, I know that, uh, we had bumped that up to make sure and take care of stuff. Um, we thought we had, um, a pretty good handle on, um, the different town buildings and shifts. We brought it down a little bit. And listening to these things that have just come up lately, I think next year we will probably bump that up as part of our budget line, and, uh, to make sure that we have the money there, and if we don't use it, it just goes back in the general fund anyway, so. I think we will listen up, Bob, and bring it up to the previous level.
I'm, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that our revenues this year will offset a, I think, repairs, because we've got some buildings going on, it's currently used penalties, and I just hope we get enough to, uh, protect ourselves against, uh, uh.
Depleting the surplus.
Right, depleting the surplus, and, and warding off, warding off public service sometimes. Um, so it is a, I, I, we, we're trying to do the right thing, Dave, but things, again, we don't wanna sh- punt ourselves as.
Sure, sure. And it's nice to rethink things and look at them, and like Bob said, and I think it's a good year. Maybe when we bring it back up, and if we, if we look like we're under control again, then we bring it back down.
Absolutely. But we don't, we, it's just hard to have to go back to the taxpayers in November, right? Sorry, we have to raise taxes.
But that number has seemed to work for the last few years.
To what?
It's always, there's always something unexpected that comes up, and now that we're being brought to our attention after we've set.
You know, we were trying to watch our budget like we asked the other departments to watch it. No sense in having the money there if we weren't gonna use it, but.
I think we could have used the additional money this year, but you know, we'll have to wait till next year for some of the items. Well, the thing is, what I'm hoping for, that we have enough of a surplus, so if we, uh, at least encumber someone, we ran.
Yeah, four projects, and we might, might be too large to do it.
Exactly.
Okay. That being said.
Just remember that it's still a warranty going on that library.
It is eight fifty-four, and I wanna make a motion.
I, I can't make a motion. That gentleman makes a motion.
Yeah, why don't you make the motion, Dave?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second Bob's motion.